Welcome to the, um, whatever this is. Where's the date?
October 2nd.
Oh, October 2nd, uh, 2023, Meeting of the Craft and Planning Board. We're doing this as a hybrid meeting. Zoom and in the room. Roll call.
Roll call. Mr. Davidson.
Present.
I am here. Mr. Robbins.
Present.
Mr. Veca Truman.
Present.
And Mr. Hassener.
I'm here. Okay. First item, let me, it's gonna be a little complicated here because we have continued public hearings that we can't actually formally be doing until 7:30, but the idea, somebody's idea is for us to talk as much as we can about the stuff around the actual hearing content, like how all this is coming together and how we're gonna do it at town meeting. First item on the agenda is public input. If there's anybody out there, nobody in here who wants to speak to us about something within our purview, this is the time. Apparently not. Alright. Oh, uh, wrong. Alright, we have we have really, really two, two things here. We, we can't do the action items per se. Um, yeah, the action items being, uh, are we saying, deciding something about our reports on the warrant articles, the zoning articles, uh, until we know what we think about it, which should be after we have the hearing completed. But there's a lot woven into that along with presentation plan and strategies for proposed articles. It's kinda complicated, um, in some ways. Often, uh, first question might be, who's gonna present, make the motions and who's going to deliver the planning board reports? Um, in recent years, it's been mostly the chair who's done that.
The reports, yes.
But, um, going back further, back in my earlier time of the planning board, the board members decided, kinda divvied up the articles among them to, um, handle. Uh, I'm for sure not gonna be able to handle the, uh, stuff that Dave knows about. And, uh, assuming that he doesn't have to be, step in as moderator, I was thinking, what is it? Is it two articles really, Dave?
Yeah, I mean, the, the ones that, you know, that I know the most about are the, those, I suppose you could say there's three of them. The, uh, the, the two on the MBTA community zoning, one is the map and one is the zoning bylaw language. And then there is the 40R expansion. So that's basically, it's forty seven, forty six, forty seven, and forty eight, the article numbers.
And I was thinking maybe it'd be better if you did those. And if anybody's interested in the easy ones.
Easy-ish, you know, the ones that are kinda going through like they're supposed to, um.
I'll say, I, I have no preference on one way or the other. I know last meeting, I got told to do them because I was chair, but I don't, I don't mind one way or the other.
Alright, well.
Sorry.
Alright, Natalia's just arriving. We'll give her a moment to get connected, whatever.
These are not completed, but as a reference, if you need them from last meeting.
Thank you.
That's a pleasure. Yeah, oh, minute. We have, we have twenty-five minutes, so you have plenty of time to get your, get logged in.
Yep, no, no need to rush through this, this is early part of the meeting here.
We're, we're vamping into already. Oh, Dave, Dave, you can see, do we have anybody tuned in?
We have nobody, no, no attendees on Zoom. It's just us plus Mark and Bill for the 40R expansion.
Yeah.
You do have bills, by the way, too. We have bills that were added to the agenda.
What about them?
To approve.
We have bills to approve.
Yeah, well, we, alright, I was gonna, let's do that.
Have you want to do it?
Let's do that. Um, bills.
I move that we approve our bills.
Second.
Moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Can we drag this out somehow? Move to approve each line item of the bill?
I don't think so.
We don't, we don't need to drag it out like that.
But you'd have to amend the motion that's already been made or withdraw in order to do that. I don't think so.
Come on, guys.
Um, if there's no discussion, roll call.
Mr. Davidson.
Aye.
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Veca Truman.
Aye.
I vote aye and Mr. Hassener.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Uh, let's see, we have minutes from September 25th?
Um, there's two sections that aren't complete. I handed those to you so that if you needed to reference for tonight's hearing, if you needed to reference back. That's the only reason I gave them. There's two sections that aren't totally complete.
Okay, so we can't.
The motions are there, there's just not.
Yeah, well, we can't.
And they're not online yet either, so we don't.
I see. So, uh, we'll, uh, not do the minutes. There's no staff report, is there?
No.
Correspondence, I didn't see anything.
I added some today. There was a couple more that were added, but it's just, um, legal, public notices from other towns.
I can talk about each notice if, if you wanted to buy time. I've got nothing really real to say about it, but I could talk about them.
Did you discuss the, any, uh, what you, the strategy?
Where, we were, no, I think, I got pushed ahead here about that. I need to do bills. No, uh, we're trying to figure out how to do it. No, it was my hot idea that we hold the hearings and schedule them at 7:30, back about twenty-five years ago. Before that, the hearings were scheduled at, at, at beginning of the meeting and things never worked out well. Um, but tonight, it would be better to have, um, you know, hindsight's always.
Yep.
Um, we can also, uh, I suspect that this will be short, reports from planning board representatives on town committees and CMR PC. Does anybody have anything? Apparently not. Alrighty, um, back to how this works. Um, we have, some of the articles are, are looking easy, you know, change a word or two here, here and there, the, the usual kinda thing. And that should just go along as we usually do. But we have these, I guess, three articles. Well, two, maybe three. The map, I, I don't know, I guess we're gonna have to decide about which map now. And, and, uh, but that, that may not be procedurally a problem. It may be judgment, judgment wise, a problem. We can talk about it. When we're, I don't know, maybe we can talk about it now. What do you think?
I'll, I'll say on the, the map, I think the one that we had at our last meeting is probably the one that we should lead with at town meeting and have up and plan to use for the warrant. The, you know, colorblind versions, I definitely appreciate having. I think we should have them in the presentation and mention to the public that we have colorblind versions if there are folks who feel they need them.
Yeah. That's, that's exactly what I was thinking.
To, to be clear, the, the colorblind versions show you what the normally colored map would look like to a colorblind person. It is not, it is not a recommendation for an alternative format that would be more visible to the colorblind.
I think that, uh, then probably we'll be talking about the one we've seen. Um, and just it'd be an administrative level thing to have, um, the ability to make, make an accommodation for anyone who has color issues.
Yeah, those, those, I put those together strictly for informational purposes to give you, give, give you a sense of what the, what that particular color scheme that we use on the map, what that would look like to a colorblind person. It, it is, you know, sort of, it's well beyond the scope of anything that we're doing for town meeting. But, uh, you know, going forward, one might want to suggest the future construction of the zoning map should, uh, maybe take into account how it's a, a choosing a different color scheme that might be more easily visible to the colorblind community. But yeah, those, you know, though I put that together just because the topic came up at the last meeting of, you know, what does this map look like to someone who's colorblind?
Yeah.
But we're not, I don't think, I don't think we're in a position to propose changing, changing the color scheme on the zoning map today.
Yeah, okay. That wasn't clear, um.
Yeah, that, that does bring a thought I would have too, is that if the, you know, state level organizations or other, you know, town planners have any experience in making accommodating, you know, zoning maps for, you know, colorblind citizens. I don't know if there's any guidance or anything that has been, you know, pre-established to kinda figure that out. I don't think I heard of anything.
I'm, I'm not aware of anything. I do know, I mean, one, one reason I did this is, is sort of drawing upon my work with the bylaw study committee, where we reached out to the Accessibility Advisory Commission for some feedback on how the bylaw committee's report could be made more accessible. But there's a much broader topic that we've only sort of scratched the surface on it. Really, you, you could, you could make an effort uh, to, uh, you know, across the board for all the, for everything that town produces, we could, we could make some efforts towards making that more accessible. And that certainly, you know, go, the scope of that is far beyond what we as a planning board have any jurisdiction over. And I think I remember hearing some bits and pieces of discussions that maybe the town ought to look into making their reading materials generally more accessible. Uh, but, uh, yeah, that's, that's a much broader topic, you know, covers a lot more territory. I do know that I ran across some advice from the, um, I'm not sure which, which state organization it was. Uh, I don't think it was the Architectural Accessibility Board. I think it was another, um, state level organization on accessibility. They, they had some material that was, you know, uh, some advice on how to make documents, you know, printed documents, text documents mainly, more accessible. I didn't see anything on there about making graphics more accessible, but, uh, you know, that's something that, you know, you know, hopefully that the town will be pursuing at some point in the future is to generally making everything we produce more accessible. But, yeah. The zoning map is a particularly complex thing to try to, you know, it just, the map itself is inherently kinda complex and, and, uh, it would probably take a fair amount of work to figure out a way to, you know, to make it more accessible. But that's far beyond anything that we hope to do right now.
Right. Um, first, the first zoning maps that I worked with didn't have this problem. They were blue line, you know, zero, uh, uh, drawings with different kinds of lines.
Yep.
Uh, and I, I wonder whether everybody is doing, you know, lots of towns are doing colored zoning maps now. Um, or if we're the only ones, I suspect that others are too. So there ought to be some sort of common thinking going on. Um, but then that comes around to what distinction between accommodations that would be good and accommodations that you have to make. I'm not sure, Dave and I are on the IT committee and I'll bet you that we don't remember too much, certainly I don't, about exactly what level of website um, accessibility the town is obligated to. You know what I mean, Dave?
Yeah.
Um, and that covers, that covers a, a, a number of different things, but I, I don't remember with what I did with it. I don't remember color being terribly referenced in the tests and whatnot. I saw for what.
I don't think the, at least the federal government accessibility rules require anything for colorblindness explicitly. I don't, I, when I worked at Mozilla, I did look into that, you know, earlier on when I was there and, you know, was reading some of that stuff, but I don't recall it existing like five, 10 years ago when I looked at it. I doubt they've added it since. They might have. But I don't remember colorblindness being a check. I think they did describe that if there is a a picture that holds actual value, you need to have some, like textual description.
Yes.
But, you know, that, that brings the.
So readers, uh,
Blind readers have the access.
Blind readers, page readers.
Yes.
Have something to, um, fill in.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I guess at some point we can share thoughts with, um, whatever they are now, the accessibility, uh, committee, um, and see broadly. You know, cause all town documents, the website.
Yep.
All of that would be interesting to know what's important, what's being done. How it's being done.
And one thing I've learned from the long tooth of dealing with accessibility type issues, just because there's no law that requires you to do it, doesn't mean you shouldn't.
Oh, no. Um, but there's do you have to, or what do you have to do? What else is there?
Yes.
Um, and how do you do it? The web has gotten, I wonder what all these pages that come up now with ads and this and that and whatnot. I wonder what they do when someone's using a reader, page reader. Oh. And, and there's intertwined JavaScript, you know, pulling stuff out of libraries and, oh. Uh, let's see. What else can we? What else do we have cooking on all of this?
I think the only thing else I think is worth mentioning is we're not going to be completely done with the action item or this discussion item until we talk about the ZBA article anyway, that we have.
Well, it's, it's article, uh, that's a separate hearing.
Yes.
But, um, uh, we will, we'll see where we are. We can unless something develops, we could close the hearing.
This hearing.
The hearing that we're coming to in ten minutes, um.
I think that's what we're expecting is to be able to close this hearing. And then if you close the hearing and all the amendments are okay, then we can.
Yeah, well, the, uh, uh, not at all.
Well, this, yes.
If.
Uh, I mean.
Yeah.
But the language is in, I think.
Oh, we could always do the new report for the other article Thursday anyway.
I.
Yes.
I'm, I'm, I'm waiting till 7:30.
Yeah.
To, uh,
Okay.
Communicate some of my thoughts, um.
Do you think maybe you can, um, figure out who's going to mainly present whatever is going to be brought up at town meetings?
Well, you, I, I think we were talking about, Dave is likely to be the one to do the, the three, three um, articles. Well, one of those is the map, but it's, right, but it's three, including the map, Dave?
Yes.
Okay.
And then.
And, um, between as well.
Yeah.
Cause, well, we, we want the easy ones. I want the very easy ones. I don't.
So you'll make the motions for the regular ones, the other, the other two?
Two or three?
I, I think the select board has been doing the motions lately and will do the reports.
You'll do the, you'll do the.
Okay, cause that, I was, again, yeah, I've been really
Oh, Natalia.
Mike.
Baffled by all the stuff that's been going on. Um, we haven't um, we haven't done most of the motions. Um, and I'd be just as happy to see them do some of the motions that are being contemplated here.
Yeah, it, I think the modification motion that we might need to make if we are putting, if we get to that one, we might need to.
Well, we're gonna have to see about that in a little while.
Yeah, but I think, I think it's safe to say the select board is likely to be doing the the majority of the motions, the initial motions, and then we can do our reports.
Yeah, yeah, we should, we should be able to have things set up so that we don't need to be making any amendments to the motions. We, you know, well, you know, we can talk about logistics a little bit later, but we should be able to have the motions written appropriately. And then, as, as you just had noted, in, in days gone by, it used to be the board that proposed a warrant article, someone from that board would make the motions on the floor. We kinda got into the habit of the select board making all the motions. Our obligation then is to read the planning board report and be available, you know, making any presentations we might need to make, answering questions. But I think they, they kind of, they kind of got into the habit of having the select board read all the motions just for convenience sake. But we'll have to, once, once we get done with the hearing, we can, we can figure out how we want to, you know, have these things handled in terms of the motions and any, any, anything else that goes down on the floor.
Well, we were encouraged to figure that out here. Hopefully it's easier than it seems. I hope on the, on the ZBA article that we do have people coming to talk to us on the 12th and explain and advocate and answer and whatnot.
You talking about the building department?
I don't know who are the, whoever, I thought it was a ZBA filing the.
It's a combination of, of building.
Yeah, well, they it's gonna be at least some discussion before we.
So do you want me to have him invited?
It's a public hearing on their article. Um, you might point out that it is customary for the petitioner, uh, the, the warrant article submitter to, uh, participate in hearing. Hmm?
Yeah, I, I would certainly expect at least one member of the ZBA to be present.
Yeah, and if this has actually been instigated by a staff member, then maybe that staff member would be beneficial.
Agreed.
For them to be here.
Anyway.
I wonder who they'll be. Um, I believe that, well, I don't know. Let's see, we're doing there must be something more we can go out and find some public to make comments. One, two, three, four, five, six, yes. Okay. Which ones are the easy ones and which ones are the hard ones? I have three different ways of figuring out what things on the agenda and whatnot and paperwork referred to. One is a, a zoning bylaw number. Another is, um, the warrant article number. And the other is a name that is understandable. And between all of that, and then documents to cover across that, um, span, um, okay. That, that one. Yeah, that one. I think this one. This one. Um, okay. Three minutes. I'm thinking we can do the hearings, starting with the ones that aren't too hard. Which I think are the second, fifth, and sixth on the agenda. Maybe in the future, we should have separate public hearings on separate zoning bylaw warrants, articles.
It's the advertising too, the cost would be, that's, yeah.
I should be able to add put several hearings in one.
It's just that there's a lot more wording that way. That's why we.
But this, this having six, six articles in one hearing, which are going different directions. Um, we don't usually have quite this many.
And we don't usually have as much discussion over them either.
Hmm?
And we don't usually have this much discussion over them either, when last minute changes.
Yeah, if you get a citizen's petition, then there's a little more to it.
And citizen's petitions, from my understanding, you usually can't just change them even slightly without every citizen that did it signing them the change.
Or even withdraw.
Yes.
Um, decide to withdraw it ahead of the, I think you have to vote to pass over or I don't think table, does, do we ever table motions, Dave? I don't remember one.
Not that I can ever remember, no.
I remember, we used to have, haven't, hasn't, haven't done it for quite a while, I think, refer to study. You know, refer to some, somebody or other to study and come back at the next meeting.
Yeah, I can remember that happening occasionally.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
I can.
It's Mark Popescu.
Hi.
How are you this evening?
Uh, waiting for not 7:30.
Well, that's why, that's why I'm on the line with you here at 7:29. I'm away with family and I was told that we would go first when we spoke with staff last week. I've got people waiting for me to uh, gather together for a dinner reservation at eight o'clock. Is there any, any way you can take the 40R thing first?
Okay. Okay. And it is now seven thirty. Now, which one, which one do you want to uh? Ta- tell me.
Article forty-eight.
Well, see, I don't have article, I don't have the article numbers on my agenda.
Yeah, that would be twenty twenty-three dash zero one.
Ah, the first one, very good, all right. Now, do we have any open questions about that, or do you want to tell us something about that?
I, I'd love to share a screen and show you the work that we did last week.
Dave, can you?
Let me see, there we go, you should be able to show your screen.
Okay.
Well, I should be able to, but I'm not.
I would teed up, but it's not helping me out here, hang on one second. No, that's not.
Something's happening, there you go.
No, that's not the right thing, hang on. Here we go. So Mister Chairman, um, we, as you may know, Bill Rail from the uh EO HLC. Responded last week with uh a tentative approval of the zoning. And he made three suggestions. I looked at article forty-eight as it appears on the warrant. And I noted that some of the changes you had suggested earlier, Miss uh Dave. Uh, were on the warrant, uh, there was a, a total conversion of DHCD to EO HLC. A new definition for EO HLC and a deletion of the DHCD definition. Couple of typos were picked up, and so in the comparison of the documents. These are the proposed floor amendments that need to be made. To article forty-eight in order to comply with the recommendations of, of William Rail. Program Director, Chapter Forty-R at uh EO HLC. They're very simple. Uh, he added, uh, in number one, he added. And not otherwise to se- to section thirteen point five point C point four, this has to do with the limitation of twenty percent. Uh, i- in uh Chapter Forty-R, except where the project is subject to section thirteen point five point C point four. And that has to do with age restricted housing, that's number two. Very technical amendment. The PAA may require that twenty-five percent in an age restricted project will be affordable. Night, we don't contemplate an age restricted project. And this is just housekeeping from a EO HLC perspective. And then the last one, there was a missing section in the article that was advertised. And it had to do with thirteen point five point J, no waiver. The affordable, the affordability provisions in a Chapter Forty-I, Forty-R bylaw may not be waived. Somehow, it looked like it just fell off the page, um, so we took Bill's recommendation to put it back in, and there it is.
Yeah. Okay, so, yeah, so, yeah. I think we're gonna end up taking a slightly different approach. But including all of it, we, we will include this, but uh as a bit of a background to this, it turns out that. What got included in the warrant was incomplete and ambiguous. Uh, so to, to the point where. It's not entirely clear from reading the warrant. What is, you know, in, in some of the details, what is being changed and uh. And, and yes, thirteen point five point J, did, did not show up on the warrant. What, what happened was in, in an earlier version of the proposed language. Uh, when it was inserted into the warrant. Sections that had no changes were omitted entirely. So what you see in the warrant is an incomplete representation of the zoning bylaw, section thirteen. And in fact, it turned out after we looked at it, or I looked at it with Fiona. That even some, some changes that were intended to be included somehow didn't show up in the warrant. So because the language printed in the warrant is incomplete and ambiguous. Fiona and I at least reached the conclusion that. We will have to include in the planning board's report, the entire section thirteen with all changes. Marked up, so, so, so in other words, in the planning board's report, I think our, the idea is to include. All of the, all of section thirteen with all the changes, you know, both previous and recent uh marked up. So if we, if we end up proceeding that way, then we won't be needing a floor amendment. We will simply have the, the primary motion will refer to the language as printed in the planning board's report. You know, we have on occasion. Done things that way previously where instead of including the actual language in the warrant. We, the warrant, the warrant itself or the motion refers to the planning board's report for all of the changes. So assuming that the board is, uh, ends up deciding to go with that approach. Then uh we can kind of set the warrant article aside. You know, it does provide the, the general scope of things. But then rely on the planning board's report for all of the details. So that would include everything that you've shown us here, Mark and more.
And will the planning board report be a handout as folks enter into the town meeting?
Yes, it would absolutely have to be.
Okay, that, that, that sounds okay.
Yeah, we, we, we have done, we have done some zoning bylaw changes i- in that fashion, you know, before in recent years. Yeah, my preference is to include the actual language in the warrant, generally speaking, but we don't always do it that way.
No, that sounds like it'll work, as long as the voters are apprised of what they're voting on with a handout that they can pick up as they walk to their seats, that's, that's fine.
Yep, and, and we, and we make the planning board, we, we pu- we publish the planning board report on the town website in advance of town meetings. So there, there is an opportunity for people to read it uh prior to coming to town meeting.
Great, well, I, I thank you again, Dave, for your work on the uh draft that had DHCD proliferating. Um, uh, when I saw the article forty-eight, I, I figured that somehow your changes had made their way. If there are more changes that need to be made, what you've suggested is perfectly fine with us.
Yep, yep, and you know, be- beyond what we've already talked about. I, uh, I have an, a, a number of other mostly housekeeping little details that, that I would like to propose to the board that we include. Um, and. Pen- pending other, pending other question discussion, questions and discussion on this topic. I, you know, I would be, it'd probably be a good idea for me to go through what I think the latest is. Uh, at least the, the latest that I would propose, and we can, we can kind of go through that. You know, if, if the board is comfortable, if the board wants to proceed in that direction. Any obje- any objection from the board, any thoughts?
I'm, I'm just really uncomfortable with this process. Um, you're, you're talking about m- m- major zoning legislation, you know, making serious changes in the town. And uh. I, I guess. I think that normally the voters have known and started by being offered. What was printed, um, and then possibly having amendments to it on the floor. After the planning board report, um, this is a whole different thing where the planning board's gonna change. Changed details in what was printed. If it was a warning, no, we're gonna, we're gonna put in a law that's sort of like this, um, that's one thing. But you publish, here's a set of words. I don't know. Probably just me.
Yeah, I, it's certainly the, the way this has evolved is less than ideal. But in my mind, the way forward with this is to recognize that the warrant article is. Incomplete and ambiguous, it is not, yeah, it gives you a general idea of what's being proposed. It missing, it's missing some details. But either we move forward with this town, at this town meeting with the language that we really want. And yes, it's kind of coming at us kind of late, but it's there. Or we just punt this to May. And those are really the choices we have.
Well, I don't know what you're proposing to change, Dave, so.
Well, let's.
It's this procedural.
Yeah, so let's, so let's, let, let's go through what I'm, what I, uh, I, I will explain what I'm talking about. Uh, let me begin, and I, I wanna share my screen here, so.
I, I will stand down here.
All right, let me see, where did I put that? All right, check and see which, which one I'm trying to share here, I've got too many. There we go. So we've got, I think the, the, the starting point for what I'm looking at is. The latest, the, the September twenty-seventh uh doc- document that Bill Rail at EO, EO HLC provided. But so basically, what I, what I'm proposing here is we take, we take that. Which is all of the changes that EO HLC has proposed, both in their, you know, going back to when they first started reviewing this. And then to that, I'm proposing to add a few things. Most of these things are editorial in nature, uh, but I'll just kind of go through them. And, and so, and, and of course, as a reminder, that's, that's not the same thing that we see printed in the warrant. Oh, what was printed in the warrant was derived from. The EUH, EO HLC version prior to the latest changes we got from them. But as I said, that, you know, what's in the warrant was incomplete. And so, so what, what I'm proposing here is to take, based on that EO HLC document, which was, you know. Uh, one of the documents on the uh, you know, planning board webpage for this meeting. Um, I'm proposing a few things, most of them, like I said, are minor. Uh, in thirteen three A, I'm proposing that we preserve the formatting of the, of the two paragraph numbers, one and two. I'm proposing that we use the convention that, and this, this is, this is picky stuff in, in, in some of it. But it's, it's all, I might as well mention it, uh, it's conventional in typography to put the comma before the closing quote, not after. Uh, the, the substantive thing here is identification of the, of the new, uh, the map of the new district. I just took the, took the version of the map that we sent in for EO HLC approval and just took the title and the date from that. So that's, that's kind of a substantive change here to clearly identify the, uh, the map. The rest of it's basically typography. Uh, moving on down. Um, this is really picky in this particular, this is thirteen five E. Uh, the items are separated by semicolons for the document that uh UA two C provided happened to have a period there. There is this and one other place where. Affordable housing units, the, the word unit was capitalized, but because that's not a defined term, that should not be capitalized. Um, here's the appropriate, use of the appropriate article, and instead of a affordable home, homeownership unit. Again, units.
Care about the process.
Pardon me?
I don't care about the commas, and I don't think we need to spend everybody's time doing this. The point is, there's a change, and the process that we deal with to make this change. I tell you what, probably nobody else cares except me, so I'll vote uh present.
All right, I'm, I'm just, I mean, I've got a couple.
So, all I was gonna say is, I do have a, you know, a high level concern with just handing everyone a full, you know, section thirteen and saying. Here, we're gonna vote on it tonight, you know, that, I think is a. That is a very hard thing to ask people to understand and vote on, and I, you know, I have a concern about that. I, you know, I don't want to necessarily say we're going to, you know, block this article moving forward for town meeting necessarily. But I think handing the entire article, you know, entire section, saying this is the thing we have. That to me feels, you know, the, the kind of thing I hate in, you know, Congress where a lot of people get. You know, a giant pack of things, and I said, we're gonna vote on this in an hour.
Or right now.
Yeah, or right now.
Right, so your alternative is to punt this to me?
No, that's, that's not an alternative from Claremont's perspective, Dave. Mister Chairman, may, may I suggest that the minor changes that Dave has made reference to so far. Certainly are not objectionable to me, I think they're great that he caught them. But there's no reason why we can't add them to the three changes that I've put on the proposed floor amendments. They're so minor, people, their, their eyes are gonna glaze over a town meeting. If there's nothing more that Dave has that's worse than what he showed us already. I can work with Dave to put together a single piece of paper that will be handed out to the voters at town meeting. That will use as its base document, the advertised article forty-eight in the warrant.
Well, there is a lot more than that. Remember, I told you that there are some missing sections, some in the warrant article as printed. There are changes that didn't get printed. So we do that, we could, we could create a floor amendment that describes all of the changes. That need to be made to the warrant article to get where we wanna go, and I'm prepared to do that.
All right.
If that, if that's the way the board wants to go.
Um, this is, we were talking about throwing a different document. Than the one that's in the warrant out, that's one thing. Floor amendment is another. As long as it's not too, you know, doesn't, doesn't make too much difference.
I'm, I'm from the old school, you make a floor amendment that is predicated upon the document in the warrant. And then everybody knows what the warrant looks like, you go through the floor amendments before you vote on the main article, and everybody goes forward together.
And maybe.
Floor amendment will be complicated.
I, if the op- if the option is May, it's, it's not complicated at all from Claremont's perspective.
Yeah, right, so, I mean, yeah, yes, if, if the board would prefer to take that approach. And instead of including the complete amendment in the planning board report. If we wanna take the approach of crafting a floor amendment that accompl- that ends up with the same wording, we can do that. My, 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 my feeling on that is that that floor amendment is going to be difficult for the voters to understand. But it will be a floor amendment to the warrant article as printed, we can do that. You know, and I, I'm not far away from, yeah, I've got all the information I need to do that. I've got, I've got the way I want the article to end up looking like, I've got the, what's in the warrant. I, I can produce that floor amendment. If that's the board's preference, we can do that.
I'll say this for me.
May I, may I suggest that we continue this discussion then till the October twelfth hearing of the board? At which point Dave and I will jointly create an agreed upon floor amendment package?
Which way do you wanna go, board? I'll go either way.
Do people have trouble hearing me? Do we have to keep the hearing open? Or can that be? In, in the development of the report? After the hearing is closed, I'm hoping we close the hearings tonight.
Yeah, yeah, I, from my, from my point of view, I would say, yes, we. If the board agrees on what we want to see, how we present it on town meeting floor. We don't have to keep the hearing open for that, right?
I can live with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Natalia has a question. Natasha has a question.
I just wanted to, I'm not sure if it's clear, but the planning board report that Fiona wrote, from my understanding, is all the edits were included in it.
But, but this isn't.
So.
I, it, it's a question of how to put forward those. Planning board report isn't an action on town meeting floor.
What I'm saying, I'm sorry, excuse me. The wording is already in there, is my point. So I was gonna suggest, like, when the, it's on the floor and they make the motion, we could have in advance have given the moderator copies so that they can put it up on the screen.
Yeah, the logistics we can do. I, it, it may even be that you want to have a handout that says there's gonna be an amendment, and, uh, here's what the law is gonna look like with that amendment that you're gonna hand out, you know. The, 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 those logistics, there's what, a couple of weeks to do. But I, I think maybe, I, I don't think anybody's unhappy about, you know, you guys get the, get the exact words that you want. And we get the process we just talked about. Floor amendment streamlined, hopefully, by as much as Dave and you can.
Yeah, that would be great. You know, I had a conversation with Bill Rail when he sent it back to me the first time. He said, you know, if you, if you just voted this, it would be fine with me. So it, it wouldn't be perfect, but it would be fine with D H C D E O H L C if we had Bill Rail's version, uh, on the books. But if, if it can be better, if it can be cleaned up, I'm available to work with Dave to get something together for the final report.
Even if we wanted to, to pass his, his letter, what he had, what he sent you, it would still be the same problem.
Bill said that if we voted what his letter said, he'd be more than happy with it.
If you.
Can I, one more time? The planning report includes all the edits made by, uh, Rail and these, that's what I'm saying, the language is there.
And it is hopeless to hand that to the town meeting.
No, no, I'm just saying, to vote on, the language is already ready. All the edits that they're, they are talking about are there.
It's fine. We can, we can close the hearing. And they're gonna work out what, what it, uh, work out, work this out.
And all I was gonna just add to it, you know, for two kind of points I wanted to say is, you know, first off, it's Robowski, you know, thank you for your work on this, and thank you for, you know, trying this together. Though the one thing I want to say is, this is currently a planning board article, so if the planning board decided to move this to May, you know, and, you know, to be very blunt, it's not Claremont's and yours, your, you know, desire to have it in the fall, that would be prevailing. You know, so that's one thing I wanted to say to me, you know, that is a very, you know, clear point. I think we should still try to move forward. My biggest concern, I think the amendments will, you know, solve, is that we can provide town meeting with the most, you know, with the strongest ability to understand the changes and vote on the changes as they will actually be. And I think that.
So let, let me propose this. Let me, let me bring my, the, the thing I was showing you, I want to bring that back on the screen. I want to make sure that the board is comfortable with all the changes that have been proposed to date. And if we're comfortable with, if we're comfortable with the changes, we can present them to town meeting and that we can discuss how that's presented to town meeting separately.
Let, let, let's just see if anybody has a need to look at that.
If, if they are all in, you know, like semicolons, commas, capital letters, you know, that kind of thing, like you already said, I'm happy without peeking at it. But if there's some substantive changes, then we can briefly talk about those substantive changes only.
Yeah.
Uh, let, let, in terms of substantive changes, there is one. Let me see. Let me, let me, uh, zero went on that. There is one, one change that I would consider substantive compared to what E O H L C had sent to us. And that is what's on the screen now. Bill Rail suggested that we make the minimum street and lot line setback fifty feet. Fiona would like to see the minimum lot line setback remaining at fifteen feet. Uh, there was a minimum lot line setback for existing buildings of zero feet. That is no longer of interest to us because the building in question, the build, the building that was the reason for that is gone. But Fiona did want to retain a fifteen foot minimum lot line setback. That, that I would consider substantive relative to what Bill Rail sent us. But the other changes, yeah, they're just editorial in nature. And if the board trusts me to get those right, then, uh, all well and good. This is the only other one that I wanted to call attention to.
I, I, I know from working with Bill many years, he's, he's not gonna care whether it's fifteen feet.
That's.
If that's what you want, that's what he wants.
Yes, right. The, uh, there are some parameters in there, like the, the, the maximum open space. That's dictated by chapter forty R. You know, we had the word, the wording we had in there presently is minimum open space. Bill changed that to maximum. I didn't like that idea because I like, I like open space. Then I read forty R again and realized, yeah, it has to be that way. But yeah, I didn't see anything in there that, you know, that led me to think that Bill would be set, dead set on fifty feet. So with all that, then, if there is nothing else of substance on this article, then, you know, yeah, I can, uh, I, I will be happy to work on, I mean, the, the, there's how, how exactly to construct the planning board report is one thing. How to construct what we do on town meeting floor is related but distinct. And we could, we can work, we can work those details and talk about them again as a board, but, uh, is for, for the purpose of the public hearing, it sounds like the board is comfortable with, you know, everything that we're, you know, that, everything that we've worked out to date with Bill Rail and Mark here and myself and Fiona.
How do you, um, in Congress, and they have some way of making an amendment being, strike everything to the last period and insert the whole thing. You know what I mean? There, there is such a, such a process. Uh, you might do it that way, but okay.
Yeah, we, we, I can, I can figure out how, how to write
Yes.
the language.
Um, it's, it. I didn't plan on this being this long a meeting, and neither did they. Can we move on to the next one?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark.
Go join my family, and Dave, I'll call you and we'll go from there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Right, I, I, I'll, I'll take a look at all the words and then, and, and come up with a, come up with a, a best shot at finding language that works as a, as a, an amendment or a floor amendment, or however we end up constructing that.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Shall we do the zoning map? I like it. Let's move on.
Right, nothing more to be said about that. I mean.
Okay. And the other one, um, uh, create section fourteen entitled M B T A communities, multi-family overlay district, so on and so on. What do we have about that to be concerned with or?
The only thing on that is that the language in the warrant needs to be modified. That, that, and this, this is a, either as a floor amendment or as part of the motion. We can say as printed in the warrant, except this. There's basically, basically a phrase that needs to be removed because at the time the warrant article was submitted, we did not know whether we needed to go with ten percent or twenty percent affordability in that one zone. We now know that we can go with twenty percent. And so what Fiona proposed is in, in, in the draft planning board report, Fiona proposed that what's in the warrant article have two amendments. One is to change the name of the section, and one is to re, replace the sentence that had the optional affordability language in it with something that's more. But, I mean, you can read, you can read the draft report, but essentially what, what Fiona proposed in the draft report is the, is the one change or the, the two changes we wanted to make from what's printed in the warrant.
The, the, our report should say we found this and this, they need to be changed to that and that, and then we should have a floor motion to, um, I think, to, um, make those two changes to what's being considered.
Yeah. I think we could ask for the, for the motion to be written to, um, I, off the top of my head, I don't know the, the exact words, but basically to amend the zoning bylaw as printed in the warrant with the following changes, except for the following changes. I, I don't know if, if we know in advance, do we have to still plan on making it a floor amendment, or can we have that incorporated into the motion, the original motion?
Considering the recent discussion here a few minutes ago, I think I'd prefer to do this one the same way with an amendment.
Yeah, for, for this one where it's relatively simple, I'm not strongly one way or the other, but I think if, for consistency, it probably does make sense to do it the same way. At least for this meeting.
Yeah. By and large, it's six of one, half a dozen of the other, unless, of course, the floor amendment fails and we end up passing the original motion, in which case things look really odd. But wait till you see what the floor amendment's gonna be for the, uh, Article forty-eight.
Don't wanna see it.
It's gonna be interesting.
Yeah, well, strike, strike everything and replace it with this. Very simple. And then what we did here, we can explain. Because this and that, briefly. Any, how about that?
That's fine with me.
Okay. Does anybody object? We can move on if they don't. Now, I, um, those were the three hard ones. Um, I think I thought, all right. Z B L twenty twenty-three dash oh two, amend section five ten two definitions for marijuana terms. Anybody have anything on that? Apparently not. C B L twenty twenty-three dash oh five, amend section three point two point three point one, uh, use regulation scheduled to add new regulations for seasonal outdoor dining. Does anybody have any input on that? Apparently not. And twenty twenty-three dash oh six, amend section two point one, definitions for adding tractor trailer. Anybody have any input on that? Apparently not.
Column six, eighteen wheelers instead. No kidding.
Well, don't use coffee steering wheel, nineteen.
Maybe.
And what will it be when they get to be electric? I don't know how many wheels will they have.
Anyway.
Um, okay. That seems to be all of the things that we were had open in our hearing that we continued, if I'm not mistaken. I would think we could close the hearing.
Yes, I moved that we close the public hearing.
Second. Moved in second and to close the hearing, discussion. Hearing none.
Mr. Davidson.
Aye.
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Veckatraman.
Aye.
I vote aye, and Mr. Hassaner.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. The hearing is closed. And Dave is gonna work with Fiona and whoever about what our reports should say, and I guess we'll have to look at the reports officially at our twelfth.
Do we want to move to recommend the passage of any of these amendments tonight, or do we want to wait for the report to do so?
Um, I think, I thought we were.
We have the wording correct on all of them and put into the planning report, so that's.
Whatever you want, if, if you think you have the reports, do you think they have the reports? Do you think they do?
The, uh, the report for Article forty-eight is, does not accurately reflect the changes that we're proposing. So we're gonna need to work on the wording, uh, of, of, of the wording of the, the, the zoning bylaw language for Article forty-eight a little bit. Not extensively, but, uh, it's the, the question before the board here is in the, in the board's report, never mind what we do on town meeting floor, but in the board's report, how do we want that to read? Do we want that to, eh, to be the section as we want it to appear? Or do we want the report to itemize the amendments to the warrant article?
What, why does our report have the language? Our report says, here's what this is about. Here's what we found. Here's what we recommend.
So, so the, it's what, what are we recommending here?
Yeah.
And this is, you know, for, for forty-seven, the, uh, you know, section fourteen, the M B T A zone. Are we recommending the article as in the warrant with these, with the two changes that were itemized? For Article forty-eight, are we recommending the language, recommending the warrant article? Are we recommending, I, I think, I think we are recommending some changes. You know, we are recommending the warrant article with changes. How do we express those changes in the planning board report?
I, I guess I'm not following, but what Fiona tried to do, I believe, was to incorporate the language that would be final, that she would assume the board would recommend with all the changes. So that we could use as we, as, as you go through each one, so that you can vote on each one, say, this is the language, we recommend it this way. Because the language is already in it.
So, yeah, for the.
I, I don't want a three-page planning board report or whatever. You know, I kept scrolling, scrolling, scrolling. That's not gonna work.
No, but for our purposes tonight, if we use that language so that we can vote and say, yes, what's, what's represented, her changes that she incorporated is what we are saying, and that way we can use that language to say, Z B L oh one, the language in the report reflects the changes.
So the language in the report.
She incorporated.
No.
Okay.
The language is, the recommended language is being, will be presented as, as an amendment or whatever.
Right, but I'm just saying.
Dave has, Dave looks like he has a better idea.
Yeah, I, I think what, what, what we need to nail down here is among other things, I think for, for the purposes of the planning board report, we need to nail down how the report is going to say what we're recommending. Uh, in most, for most of these, we're simply recommending the war, recommending the warrant article as written. Uh, for two of them, we are not, or we, we may, presumably, we're not recommending Article forty-eight as written in the warrant because it is incomplete and ambiguous. You know, so what, what, how do we want to say what we do recommend? For Article forty-seven, we're not recommending it, the article as printed in the warrant. We're recommending it with two changes from what's printed in the warrant. How do we say that in the report is, is my question?
Two changes which will be offered as an amendment.
And so, yeah, I think to me, it's a matter of, we'll, we'll say we recommend passage with in, with an amendment that we will move in just a moment, you know, and then we will make the, the motion for, and, and this is why, you know, of course.
Well, you, you might say, um, we found there were certain problems, you could, maybe very, very briefly, the, 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 the warrant language, uh, had some defects, this, this, and this. And, um, we rec, we recommend, uh, and, and are bringing forward the fixes as an amendment.
Yep, and perhaps second, or if, if we take that approach, where, where in the report, we're not detailing what changes we're talking about. Yep, and perhaps second, or i- if we take that approach, where, where in the report, we're not detailing what changes we're talking about, we're just. Making it known that we recommend the article with changes. Then separate from the report, then. How do we notify the voters? How do we, how do we show the voters what the changes are that we're gonna be proposing? Presumably, we would like the voters to have some chance at reading those prior to town meeting.
So I. At least for, for me, if I may, yeah. On forty-seven, which is the simple one, we can just make the motion very clear on the floor. I think that's enough to. Have the voters be aware of what's going on with that one. That's the, you know, two minor things that we can say what they are and easily. Easily defend them. The other one, I lean toward having a printout of both the changes. And a clean copy of the article to hand out as well as present what the amendment changes are in, in some way. Is, you know, probably the ideal to, to me. I don't know if that's gonna work out, but that, that's the one that's gonna be a little harder to nail down tonight.
Yeah, I think, I think maybe the, the handout should be. What we want to be the. What is actually enacted. Yeah, just the whole, if it had been done right the first time. And hand that out, um, and it, it has to be very clearly labeled big type, um, what this is, this is. The planning board recommended, uh, is recommending certain changes which will result in this or something like that. So that people can have the.
The other things at, at the actual town meeting, we can have the moderator put up what is present being recommended on the warrant. And what the board is saying so that that it's clear when you make the motion, this is what we want to accept.
I don't know, that part, I don't think. I wanna get us past. Being ready to act, uh, having the report. Our job, our job is to, um, somehow move forward and get the report moving.
Yeah, it's not the report we need to vote on now. We actually need to vote on each, each CBL and recommending.
Yeah, yeah, what, what I was gonna just, you know, say as well is, I think we can vote that we want to recommend acceptance of. The, each ZBL change. Tonight without having the report ready.
Right.
Cause we know at this point where we closed the hearing, what those, you know, we, what those all ZBL articles are going to be, including the. Two things that we want to change to the, the. The things we want to change to forty-seven, forty-eight. So we do know those, so we can vote on recommending acceptance of them with those changes. What the report looks like, we can vote at our October twelfth meeting to finalize the report, I think. That's my opinion.
I mean, if, if, if we're gonna keep the report short by not trying to detail all the changes. Then what we have before us as a draft report. If we, if we remove that, that, the whole. Zoning by law language from. The report on article forty-eight and just shorten that up to, uh, what we've just been talking about. Then I imagine, I, I don't see any reason why we couldn't vote on the report. Tonight, because we're keeping the report simple, we're gonna, we're gonna deal with the, the extensive. Language on article forty-eight as a separate handout. And, and a, and a sort of a separate thing, but we, I think, I think, I think we have an understanding of what that's gonna look like. We just need to work the details and we can, you know, follow up at the next meeting with that. Am I missing? Unless I'm missing something, which is always possible.
So are you saying? We approve. Some. I'm not sure what. Approve the report as we've discussed.
We're on the motions for each zoning by law for recommendation first. Then the.
I don't, I don't know that's, I don't care. Whatever you wanna do.
I'll start with a motion and I can adjust the motion if necessary. Let's see. I move that the board recommends acceptance of ZBL twenty twenty-three dash zero one, section thirteen of the zoning by law. Passage amendments with the changes discussed to- tonight and in the public hearing at the twenty twenty-three annual fall town meeting.
That was which one?
The ZBL twenty twenty-three dash zero.
Okay, okay, yes. Okay, is there a second motion?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Just for, for clarity, that's article forty-eight, right, Justin?
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think my only discussion point would just be, yeah. I, I think we have the changes and then like just outlining the impact. I think in, in town meeting, it's always just good. I think a lot of people are. Coming in there like as a blank slate and don't really, you know, know all the detailed versions, so even just like a. A brief summary of like, hey, this is, this is why these changes are important, or this is the, this is the big takeaway, the bottom line. As we say of like why this change is happening. I think just having that for the voters would be, um. Would be big to help them digest the, the changes.
And somebody, Dave or Fiona is gonna explain why this is so important if. The select persons don't. Or even if they do. Uh, okay, so, uh, we have a motion to approve. Is that, that's section, the section thirteen?
To, to recommend passage of, yes.
Okay, any more discussion?
All right, Mr. Davidson.
Aye.
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Veckatraman.
Aye.
I and Mr. Hasner.
Aye, motion carries unanimously.
All right, the next one was. Come here, I'll retell her, okay. I. I move that we recommend passage of ZBL twenty twenty-three dash zero two. Section five dot ten dot two of the zoning bylaws. As amended for the annual, for the twenty twenty-three annual fall town meeting.
Second.
Moved in second, discussion. Hearing none.
Mr. Davidson.
Aye.
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Veckatraman.
Aye.
I vote aye and Mr. Hasner.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Three dot one dot two.
This is the, this is the zoning map.
That's the map.
I move that we recommend passage of ZBL twenty twenty-three dash zero three, section three dot one dot two. Of the zoning bylaw as amended for the annual, for the twenty twenty-three annual fall town meeting.
Second.
Moved in second, discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Davidson.
Aye.
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Veckatraman.
Aye.
I vote aye and Mr. Hasner.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Twenty twenty-three oh four, add section fourteen.
This is the MBTA communities. So I move that we recommend passage of ZBL twenty twenty-three dash zero four. Add section fourteen to the zoning bylaws. As presented for the fall twenty twenty-three annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
Moved in second, discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Davidson.
Aye.
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Veckatraman.
Aye.
I vote aye and Mr. Hasner.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Section three dot two dot three dot one.
And this is the outdoor dining. I move that we recommend passage of ZBL twenty twenty-three dash zero five. Section three dot two dot three dot one of the zoning bylaws. As amendment for the twenty twenty-three annual fall town meeting.
Second.
Moved in second, discussion. Hearing none.
Mr. Davidson.
Aye.
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Veckatraman.
Aye.
I vote aye and Mr. Hasner.
To, uh, aye, um, motion carries unanimously. I think. I am now down to. Finding out whether there's anything else that may legally come.
We have one more, the.
Oh, not, it wasn't on that, I was using the list. I was using this list. I had all of them, one, two, three, four, five, six.
Oh, sorry, I missed.
Didn't we just?
We did not do that last one yet.
I thought we did.
No, we did not.
Two point one.
All right. I move that we recommend passage of ZBL twenty twenty-three dash zero six, section two dot one of the zoning bylaws. As amendment amended for the twenty twenty-three annual fall town meeting.
Second.
Moved in second, discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Davidson.
Aye.
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Veckatraman.
Aye.
I vote aye and Mr. Hasner.
I vote aye, motion carries unanimously. Now, is there anything else that may lawfully come before us?
Just, just so I'm clear on what's expected of me here, going back to article forty-eight for a moment.
Tape, you can, uh.
For the next meeting, we'll prepare. The language of, I mean, I think, you know, following up on Justin's area suggestion about handouts at town meeting. What we want section to look like in the end. And a set of amendments to what's printed in the warrant. To make that, to make that happen. Is that what we're looking for?
I think that is accurate.
Um, it may help somewhere in all of this to, I guess you have to do it. Indi- individually to each member, but send whatever's going on so that, you know, if somebody. If something's not getting through, they can let you know.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
That probably has to be facilitated by staff, I think, right? Cause of, yeah.
Yeah, well, staff, staff is working.
Yep.
And some of this with the, um. Did we get, yes?
Uh, we just wanted to ask, are you going to vote on the planning board report or you're gonna, should I put that as an agenda item for the next meeting?
What did we just do?
We voted on.
To recommend. Yeah. Well. What do you think? What do you think?
I could, I could go either way. I think we are gonna have to vote on a report for the. For the ZBA article as well, and it would probably help to have a, a clean copy of the report, but I'm okay voting as we discussed earlier. If I want.
Let, let's vote on it. At, on the twelfth. Or all of them.
So table it. Table it.
Table it. Table what?
Table the vote on the planning board, um, report to the next meeting is what you're saying.
Not table, I'm just holding action.
Moving it from this agenda to the next one.
We're gonna. Whatever you want to say.
It will be on the next agenda is, is the point.
Yes, we're not going, I, I think we're agreed that we don't wanna act on a report we don't have. You know, it would be better to have a report before we approve it. So, I'm not sure whether it's tabling it, cause you have to take a vote to table. I think the chairman can decide, and he has.
All right.
In case that wasn't evident. Now, was there a motion to?
I move readjourned.
Do we have anything else now? Is that it? Second?
Um, moved in second and to adjourn, that's not debatable.
Mr. Davidson.
Aye.
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Veckatraman.
Aye.
I vote aye and Mr. Hasner.
I vote aye, motion carries unanimously.